Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our March 3rd, 2020 Michigan City Council Council Meeting to order. If everyone will please silence all electronic devices and stand for the pleasure allegiance to the flag and a prayer.
To the planet of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyle up on the roll call, please.
Mr. Timney. Mr. Paul Presibulinski?
Present.
Mr. Mack?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Ms. Tillman?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Presibulinski?
Present.
We have eight present and no one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Our approval of our minutes of our February 18th, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Of a motion to approve the minutes by Councilman Don Presibulinski and second by Councilman Paul Presibulinski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees?
Mr. President, I'd like to come back to that. I cannot find the minutes that I just wrote ten minutes ago.
Okay.
So give me a chance to find those.
Okay, thank you. We'll go over to reports of any select committees or special committees? Reports from any other city officers? Ms. Nyle, do we have any petitions?
Oh, that's right there at the end. There are no petitions.
Okay, we're gonna double back. We have the finance report.
Finance committee report. Thank you. I'll get my life together when I grow up. We'll take care of this. All right, and tonight's, March 3rd, Council Finance Committee meeting. The minutes as follows. The Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:05 PM by Chairman Dabney to review claims filed since the last meeting. Committee members Tillman and Paul Presibulinski were present, as well as council member Don Presibulinski, City Controller Yvonne Hoff Master was in attendance, as well as City Attorney Jim Myers. Claims reviewed tonight totaled $11,102.70 from the Riverboat Fund and $0.00 from the Boyd Development Fund for a total docket of $11,102.70. There was additional discussion about the purchase policy, purchasing policy, and it's on the agenda tonight. I'll explain a little more then. Councilman Paul Presibulinski moved to recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilwoman Tillman. The motion was approved unanimously. In an emotion made by Councilman Paul Presibulinski and a second by myself, Councilman Dabney, the meeting was adjourned at 6:25 PM. Summary of claims are as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Blue Sky Planning and Consulting LLC, $7,000 as for pavement asset prioritization. Dave's Garage and Auto Parts Inc., $175. That's an impound tow. DLZ, $2,543.77. That's professional engineering services that were rendered from October 12th, 2019 to November 8th, 2019. An enterprise rental car, $1,383.93. Nice car rental. Total Riverboat Fund, once again, $11,102.70. And that also is the total claims docket amount. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Councilman. So the claims from Fund 2042 Riverboat Claims, $11,102.70 and Fund 2031 Boyd Development, zero. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Paul Presibulinski. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims paid. Now to communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on February 17th and February 24th from DLZ Weekly Activity Report, ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on the 18th from Energy System Group, the City of Michigan City and Infrastructure Project. Correspondence received in my office on the 21st from George Kasmerzak regarding his reappointment to the Enrichment Corporation Board. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on February 26th from Key Konstantova, Secretary of the Elston Grove Neighborhood Association reappointing Laura Henderson as a representative on the tree board.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Can you read our first resolution by title only without objection?
A resolution by title.
Mr. President, point of order, please, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and what I'd like to bring up is, since we are now enforcing, and since we're getting into the resolutions and the ordinance portion of the meeting, where council members are allowed to speak on their opinion on the ordinances and resolutions, and just so that all council members are made aware, because I know I was never made aware, for the, you know, our instant transparency marketing that we're now doing now, is how is the five minutes being timed, being kept? Do you have a stopwatch? Are we going off of this clock here? So that when I'm speaking, if I'm concerned about when my five minutes is up, what device are you using to go by?
That clock right there. Councilman Mack will start it at the beginning of the five minutes, and it'll count down. It'll be a low to moderate sound and beep at the end of the five minutes.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, council members weren't, I wasn't made aware of it, but I just wanted to ask that question so that all the council members are now made aware of it, if they didn't know of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay. Did the author have anything to add to this resolution?
I didn't read it yet.
Oh, oh. Sorry. Ms. Nyle.
A resolution by title only. A resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Public Art Commission in the General Fund 1001 for the year 2020 in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Bryant Dabney.
Councilman Dabney, have anything to add?
Yeah, just a transfer among the councils, 4,500 increase and a decrease in the same amount. No additional funding or anything like that, once again, just a transfer in between funds.
Thank you, Councilman. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Having none, any council comments? Any council comments? I have had a comment. I was hoping someone from the Art Committee would have been present. So I went through the budget worksheet, and the budget was just past, I mean, this is 60 days barely into the budget, and here we are, re-appropriating funds that were there for one reason, and now they're needed for something else. So I looked at the total. It was for supplies, other supplies and other supplies, for $4,500. And then it's gonna be moved to line 431050 for professional services, other professional services. I would like to know what those professional services are, and are there not gonna be any need for supplies throughout the year, since they're moving that money from that line?
Good evening, Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. This is to correct an error in the budget. It was put on the wrong line item when the budget was submitted. So they typically don't have supplies, and this pays for, I guess, like different agreements they have with artists. That's why we're moving it down to that line item.
Thank you, Ms. Alfraster. Okay, any further council comments?
Mr. President, speaking to Shan Easton this evening, and she's the chairman of the Arts Committee, this same mistake happened two years in a row, where this $4,500 was put into other supplies, and it had to be transferred out of other supplies into the fund that it's being put into now, professional services. And it's basically probably gonna be used for rental of the arts, statues that we have around town, and other things that they do. That's the best explanation I got, and it makes sense to me. Being the liaison to the Arts Committee, I can guarantee you that the money is not gonna go spent in an inappropriate fashion or on something that's not needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further council comment?
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Presibulinski. Are there any objections to this resolution? Having none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution passes. Ms. Nyle, our second resolution, on first reading, by title only?
A resolution by title only requesting the Michigan City Plan Commission and the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department to waive building permit and inspection fees. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Councilwoman, do you have anything to add at this time?
Very similar to last week's resolution that we did for Habitat for Humanity. I know that we have the executive director Cindy Davis and board member Mr. Meriwether in the audience, if they would like to say a few words.
And I would also like to add that I am a board member of North Central Community Action Agency, so I will be abstaining from the discussion and as well as voting on this resolution.
Good evening. I'm the executive director of North Central Community Action. We've been in business here for 54 years. We have been providing weatherization for Michigan City for the last 40 years, and we have the ramp program that is construction, that constructs ramps for the elderly and the disabled and the low-income residents. We acquired that program in April of 2017 from Catholic charities.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Cynthia Davis. Do you want my office number?
Yes.
Okay. 301 East A Street, Suite 109, Michigan City, Indiana. And we provide those programs to, for low-income people in the area. We actually perform weatherization in seven counties, but in Michigan City, in the ramp program, we had 39 ramps that were built in 2019, and 27 of those were in Michigan City. And in weatherization, we had 79 homes that were weatherized, and there was 160 people in those homes, and there was 20 of those were for the Michigan City residents. And we are just asking for these permits to be, well, the fees for the permits to be waived, so that we can keep performing this service for the low-income elderly and disabled.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this resolution? Any council comment?
Ms.
Councilwoman Deitch?
I just would like to add that the executive director Davis and I will be meeting with the Inspection Department just to talk through, just to have the annual meeting to talk about the process for the permits moving forward, so that we can make sure everybody's on the same page.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Tillman?
Mr. President, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay, Ms. Nyle, Ms. Tillman would like to be added as co-sponsor. Thank you. Any other council comments?
Mr. President?
Councilman Presibulinski?
I will be in full support of this resolution. North, the Action Community Program does a fantastic job for, you know, the elderly, low-income, what have you. Whoever, whoever you serve in the community, you're doing it, you know, to help these folks out that are less fortunate. And, you know, if we can waive the fee, which I'm sure we all see in our hearts that it's the right thing to do, to help these folks out, and that's what the council needs to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mack?
I also am gonna be in full support of this, and I wanna thank you. My parents actually would have been officiating of this program five, 10 years ago. Their heating bill got dropped drastically, and some things aren't, just aren't gonna be profitable. Helping your own, in your own city, that's what we should do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dabney?
This is a very worthy cause, and if no one else has any other comment, I will make the motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and second by Councilman Paul Presibulinski. If there are no objections, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None, so, thank you. Resolution passes. Congratulations. Okay, Ms. Nyle, our first ordinance, our first reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Barker Civic Center Fund for the purchase of supplies to restock the gift shop for the Barker Civic Center. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Councilman, do you have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, real quick, we're, I think I said, looking to, we have $1,200 to basically restock the gift shop, and these are the, this is the type of thing, or this is what happens, and they're to, you know, help fund some of that activities going on down there. So, in the Barker Civic Center, so, that's the explanation I have for the ordinance here.
Thank you, Councilman. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sarah Burnt. I'm the executive director at the Barker Mansion. Address is 631 Washington Street. And we're requesting this appropriation because the gift shop revenue was previously managed by the Friends of the Barker Civic Center, which was the 501(c)(3) entity associated with the mansion. And last year, the former director made a shift to, began depositing gift shop revenue directly to the Barker Civic Center city account, so that our revenue could be factored the same way that our ticket sales, event rentals, and event sales are factored, so that it becomes a source of revenue for the Barker Civic Center. So, so where, this shift was made after the 2020 budget was approved. So the $12,000 is the amount of revenue that was generated from the gift shop last year.
Is it, I'm sorry, is it 1,200 or 12,000?
1,200. My mistake. I'm sorry.
I can say that was a big typo.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any council comment? Okay, having none, this will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nyle, our second ordinance on first reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance to amend Section 2-399 of the Michigan City Municipal Code, desecrating the common council as the city agency with a sole authority to approve purchase orders from the city's Riverboat Fund and Boyd Development Fund. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Author have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, real quick, what this ordinance is, is doing is we're actually changing the order of how purchases are made in the city. The way things are happening now, once the budget is approved, people can go out and purchase big-ticket items or whatever it may be, and then eventually we get the docket after some of these purchases can be made. So what this is doing is putting a step in front of the actual purchase that would then come to the city council for approval. I'll just use this, then somebody's out, they're buying a dump truck, they're gonna have to go out and get bids, quotes, and everything like that, then submit a purchase order that would come back into the city controller's office, and eventually it would be approved by the council before this purchase is actually made. So we put that step in there, that's really putting us back in control of the city finances as we're defined to do. So that's what this, this ordinance is all about, moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to this ordinance.
Ms. Nyle, Councilman Don Presibulinski would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this ordinance. Any further council comments?
Mr. President, I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay. Ms. Nyle, can you add Councilwoman Tillman as a co-sponsor? Councilman Paul Presibulinski?
Yes, thank you, President Fitzpatrick. I too would like to be put down as a co-sponsor on this ordinance, and this is an important step on controlling the funds of the city, and I'm glad that we're taking this step. We had a, not a big discussion, but we had a preliminary discussion tonight in the Finance Committee, and I believe that this will help the city council, and it'll help the Controller's Office, and it'll help the departments control their accounts and their budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further council comments? Any further council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. It's not our first ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the municipal code, Section 2-57B, to add language to said section regarding council sponsorship of an ordinance or resolution.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
No, you're, President Fitzpatrick, I would like to make a few comments on this. I brought this to, I believe we brought this forward so we do not have any misdirection in the future. We had a situation this year where some council member introduced legislation that was not seated and not on the, as far as I know, not taking their oath. But with that being said, I believe that the, besides the council member or the elect, council person-elect, I don't believe anybody that has not been seated should be introducing legislation or having the city attorneys doing any business for them until they are actively, what I consider, and I think other people consider, an active council person. And, for instance, we have a position to be filled, and when that person is selected and elected by the caucus, they have to get sworn in and seated, and they just, it's to regulate what's going on here. And I think that through, no fault of their own, but misdirection by our legal people let them do this, and I had discussions with the legal department, and it may not be written in writing, but it's questionably not a good practice. So I guess we're just trying to clarify that right now. That's, that's the gist of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Does co-sponsor have anything to add?
Basically, that I also believe that council members elected should not be able to introduce or start developing ordinances, resolutions, until they are actually seated as a council member. I know that Councilwoman Deutsch, you know, she put a couple ordinances together and resolutions or whatever exactly was going on, and this is by no means in any reflection to what she was doing. It's just, I've been on the council for three terms now, and this has never happened prior, with the prior councils, with newly-elected council members. I just think it's a good practice that council members wait until they actually get on the council before they start putting resolutions and ordinances together. It's just a, to me, a good practice in government to do it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. I wanna thank you, Angie, for doing what you did. We spoke. We voted. We put them in office. I'm glad you came in and took care of business. They don't cite no law, no ordinances that prohibit you from doing what you did. No matter what, the people spoke. Seem like y'all need to pass an ordinance on solid, great rule or something. I'm just tired of you guys obstructing everything that's going on, and the people have spoken, and that's obvious. You got new city council members. Just keep up the good work, Angie.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any other public comments on this ordinance? Any council comments? Councilman Paul Presibulinski?
President Fitzpatrick, could I ask the clerk to read this in its entirety into
Amending the municipal code, Section 2-57B, to add language to said section regarding council sponsorship of an ordinance or resolution, whereas Section 2-57B of the Michigan City Municipal Code currently reads as follows. B, no ordinance or resolution shall be introduced unless the requirements of Council Resolution Number 4365 as amended have been fulfilled, and unless a copy has been delivered via electronic mail to the email address of each council member at least 96 hours prior to the meeting. And, whereas the need exists to amend Section 2-57B to add language to clarify that no ordinance or resolution shall be sponsored by a member-elect of the Michigan City Common Council until such time as said member-elect actually assumes their respective elected office on the Michigan City Common Council under Indiana law. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of the city common council that Section 2-57B of the Michigan City Municipal Code shall be amended to read as follows. B, no ordinance or resolution shall be introduced unless the following have been met. One, the requirements of Council Resolution Number 4365 as amended have been fulfilled. Two, a copy of the proposed ordinance or resolution has been delivered via electronic mail to the email address of each council member at least 96 hours prior to the meeting. And three, the Michigan City Common Council member sponsoring the proposed ordinance or resolution has actually assumed their respective elected office on the Michigan City Common Council under Indiana law. This ordinance is to be effective upon passage and approval of the mayor introduced by Mr. Paul Presibulinski and co-sponsored by Mr. Don Presibulinski.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Is there any further council comment? Councilman Paul Presibulinski?
Thank you, President Fitzpatrick. With that being said, I wanna inform, I wanna inform the general public that I believe that in good practice, that as many years that I was on the city council, that we never had a situation like this, and when these things arise, you need to address them, because here's what I will say publicly, that I believe that the legal staff should have said and advised the appropriate council member that this was not an appropriate thing to do at this time in the way to be sworn in and seated. So that is... At this time and the way to be sworn in and seated. So that is um. That's that's where we're at, that's where I'm at on this and I had discussions. At the time, I asked our uh legal staff and I also asked the city attorney and um. The city, our legal staff said that they had discussions with the city attorney. And the city attorney said that those discussions never took place, so. I think that this clarifies the issue and we're gonna move on from here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, uh real quick, in in regards to what happened after the election, people were elected to their position. And so Angie had seen issues that she thought needed to be addressed within the city, so she just drew things up. And turned them in and and so they were not introduced until after she was officially on the city council. Uh that's why I have no real incident, you know, or no real problem incidents that were a problem with this. Uh because nothing was introduced before she was actually seated. They just were were drawing this thing up, so. That's why I didn't, and I don't know if this is really necessary because they would not let us. Uh introduce something to the public and on the floor until they're actually city council members.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further council comment? Any further council comments?
Mister President, motion to approve?
Support.
Uh we have a motion to approve by Councilman Paul uh Don Presbelski and a uh second by Councilman Paul Presbelski. Uh Miss Nilo on the vote.
Mister Paul Presbelski?
Aye.
Miss Tillman?
Nay.
Mister Dabney?
Nay.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Mister Mack?
Nay.
Miss Deitch?
Nay.
Mister Don Presbelski?
Aye.
Um and Mister Simmons?
Nay.
We have two in favor and um six opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nilo. Uh uh unfinished unfinished business. Uh the council has one appointment to commission on the social status of African-American males, the incumbent Tracy Tillman is now on the council. And is the liaison, so uh were there any applications in for this position?
Uh yes, there was. We received one from uh Mister Rodney McCormick.
Is there a nomination?
I move that we accept the uh the nomination that was presented. Or the application that was presented for Rodney McCormick.
Uh we have a nomination to approve by Councilwoman Deitch, their second. Uh second by Councilman Mack and Councilwoman Tillman. Are are there any objections to Mister McCormick being on the commission? Uh not all in favor, see.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
And I guess it's a point of order, uh President Fitzpatrick, that the uh form is this. I guess that. This is all we, oh wait, I'm looking at two forms, one from Mister uh Kazmetchik and uh. One from uh Mister McCormick and it on this uh. Form, I see a. Special entrances described in a uh nice. A form letter on the backside and I thought we got in discussions before about having these uh filled out in uh. More uh entailedness, is that? Is this okay? I mean, we got in discussions about this before. Should we have more information on uh Mister McCormick?
Councilwoman Deitch?
Pardon me, McCormick.
Well, as far as the form is concerned, everybody, I don't know if there, is there a um. Is is there something written that says that everything has to be filled out like the comments or I don't know if that's been. Discussed before, not since I've been on the council.
My my recollection, I think it's uh completed, but there were no, there was no terminology. To specify that it has to be completed in its entirety. Uh unless you see where it's explicit in the rules there. I guess that that's it on that. Is there any further comments? Okay, we have a a motion and a second. Any other objections or Miss Nilo on the vote?
Miss Tillman?
Support.
Mister Dabney?
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mister Mack?
Aye.
Miss Deitch?
Aye.
Mister Don Presbelski?
Nay.
Mister Simmons?
Aye.
And Mister Paul Presbelski?
Nay.
We have six in favor and two opposed.
Uh thank you, Miss Nilo. Congratulations, Mister McCormick. Uh nomination, the council, the common council has one appointment to the Michigan City Tree Board, uh term expires March fifteenth. Uh Neighborhood Association represented uh incumbent Mrs. Laura Henderson and uh if I'm not mistaken, I think that was in our communications.
Yes, it was.
So can we uh remove this from unfinished?
I um just need the okay from the council and I can move forward and make the oath.
Okay, so if there are no objections, I'm all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Congratulations, Miss Henderson. Okay, uh nominations. The council has one appointment to the Michigan City Enrichment Corporation expiring. Uh term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty, incumbent is George Kazmetchik. Their nomination was.
I so I uh would like to nominate uh Mister Kazmetchik.
A nomination by Councilman Paul Presbelski and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Um are there any objections?
Mister President?
Mister President Presbelski?
I'd like to read the uh. Letter that Mister Kazmetchik took the time on making out for our information into the record, please.
Proceed, please. Thank you.
To Councilman Don Presbelski, Mister Presbelski, having been a member of the board of Michigan City. Community Enrichment Corporation the past seven years, I request that I may be reappointed to this board. Much has been completed by the board members to date. We have recently completed another successful campaign. With the awards of grants for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. We are preparing ourselves to enhance better overviews and guidelines in an effort. To assist and grant more funds to deserving organizations for their humanitarian projects in the area. We have made many advances and changes, including our online application and reporting system. This was accomplished by board members who worked and fulfilled their responsibilities. With total harmony and effort to place the funds in the best areas of serving our community and its individual. There remains much more to do in order to maintain the pro- progress of this board as completed. Is with these thoughts and sense of continuity that I submit my name for reappointment to this board for another term. Respectfully, George J. Kazmetchik. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we have a nomination and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Congratulations, Mister Kazmetchik. Uh new business. Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the members of Michigan City Council regarding the appointment of Ms. Bunny Demke. As a member of the Michigan City Board of Cemetery Trustees. Uh term beginning immediately expires twelve thirty-one. Two thousand twenty. Mister Myers, with this, can we uh vote on this now or?
Yes. There's not a nomination, because the mayor is recommending it.
Oh, there is now. This nomination is ended. Hang on. Great. Okay, thank you. Uh next we have. So uh is there a uh all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
They're in motion, okay, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's the mayor.
You should have motion.
Okay, next up, we have uh Mister Latanya Troutman, annual report for Michigan City Commission on Social Status African-American Males.
Merry Christmas.
Please state your name.
My name's Latanya Troutman of. The Michigan City Commission for the Social Status of African-American Males and I am here today to present the two thousand nineteen annual report. Um since its inception in nineteen ninety-eight, um the social status has been committed to. Improving the quality of life for African-American males here in Michigan City. The role of the commission is to um review the status of black males in the five principal focus areas, including criminal justice. Education, employment, health, and social factors. The overall goal is to improve the quality of life for black males and to reduce the desperate. Statistics that are reported annually to Michigan City. The mission of the social status for African-American males is to identify and recommend public remedies to increase. Broaden and improve the economic, educational, and social and professional status of African-American males locally and statewide as well as nationally. Our membership last year consisted of fourteen members, six were appointed by the mayor, eight were appointed by city council from various groups throughout Michigan City. Um and as for our five principal focus areas and how we enacted them locally. Um as far as social factors is concerned, we have an month-long Black History Month celebration, including. Including the Express Yourself Black History Month Talent Show, as well as Black Cinema Night where we feature various movies. We also have taken. Um youth to our Young Black Male Matters Day at the State House, as well as. Um the Black Males Annual Conference with keynote speaker, Rev. Ron. As for criminal justice, uh criminal justice, we address um child support, which is a big. Issue for African-American males through our Barbershop Talk Initiative and the goal of that program was to have an open, safe space for males to voice their opinions. Experiences and concerns regarding child support, um and we did it at about five barber shops here in Michigan City. Um as for economic and employment opportunities, we discussed um many employment opportunities as well as barriers to African-American males face here in Michigan City. And um programs that would address those barriers, including work warrants, next level training for um free training of the trades. As well as their program design for former inmate inmates who are looking to re-enter the workforce. Um and we discussed also several opportunities for employment, which included the um job fair held at the Blue Chip Casino. As well as the need for more black applicants at the fire department here in Michigan City. Um as for education, we sponsored five of you to attend the basketball camp held by Jared Jones at the LTG Summer. Basketball Camp located in Michigan City High School. We had um Solomon Martin, who was the winner of our one thousand dollar scholarship. As well as we spoke to the super assistant superintendent about implementing more diversity when it comes to the teachers last year, as well as the members. Um in regards to students and what those numbers look like were one hundred and forty-seven students graduated were white. Eighty-nine of the students who graduated were African-American. Um the rest were multicultural or Hispanic and I think the total number was about. Three hundred or just a little over. African-Americans made up the least number of graduates. Um and the most dropout with that being twenty-one students who dropped out and compared to fourteen white students. Um of the hundred percent of students who were suspended, fifty-three point four percent of those students suspended were African-Americans. Um that left us with several education questions, including how can we put our kids on a successful track when they are out of, when they are not in school? How can we fill classrooms or um AK Smith Center programs that are already available? And how can we um make best use of the programs that are available in our schools now and improve the communication between the schools? And the parents in order to fill these classrooms. And finally, um how do we reach those target students that are at risk? Um one of the things we can do is to hire more minority teachers and substitute teachers. Um which will help eliminate some of the barriers that um our African-American students are facing currently. Um by also trying to find a way to homegrown teachers and we also looked at case studies of what's happening with the teachers in. The Gary area as um also looking at a way to implement those teachers over here in Michigan City. But um another one of the barriers that they face is the salary difference when you're talking about the teachers over in Gary and how much they. Uh they actually make here in Michigan City. Um also, we discuss health with our um. Ninth Annual Black Barber Shop Health Initiative. We are coming up on our tenth annual year this year. Um and from that Black Barber Shop, we have participants from those same five. Um barber shops who participated in our ba- um Barber Shop Talk Initiative from C-Shop, Cutting Up Beauty Salon and Barber Shop. Marvelous Cuts, Platinum Designs, Sharpest Image, and we found that the biggest risk factor overall in Indiana is the Body Mass Index for African-American males. As far as our. Sorry, as far as our um income, we have a beginning balance for this year for six thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and three cents. And throughout donations, we had a total income of eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. And as far as our expenses, there was a lot, but we did do a lot this year. Um and the total expenses included six thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And our ending balance for two thousand nineteen was two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-two cents. As far as requests or recommendations, and as for the city, um we need help to attract more minority teachers to improve our students' education. Um and we also need help to improve our econo- our economy to, in order to see more minority teachers. And to improve them for African-American males who are struggling to pay their child support amongst other things. And as well to help provide the convention with more monies to continue to address issues that impact African-American males here in our community. With that being said, are there any questions?
Thank you, Miss Troutman. Are there any questions for Miss Troutman? Councilwoman Deitch?
I'll just make a couple of comments. Thank you for, you know, being here, standing up and doing the presentation. Um one of the things and that, you know, I'm very um connected to and and disturbed by is that we don't have. Um many minority students that are participating in the STEM um programs at AK Smith Center. Um we have um E- Energy Academy, we have a couple of other academies. And we have to figure out a way to get our students in those programs because those programs, the kids are able. These students, young adults, are able to get out of those programs with credits and and jump right into the workforce, making more money than most of us. If they would go through the program, so we have to figure out a way to get AK Smith engaged and and do some type of promotional. And and I'm talking about minorities, I'm including women.
Absolutely.
Um I have one female that graduated out of the Energy Academy and I mean, and that was it. So um I I think that should be one of your number one priorities, is trying to get these students. Um engaged in some of these programs where they can make good money.
Definitely, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mack?
Thank you, Miss Troutman. That was an excellent presentation and uh the the part about. Teachers and more substitute teachers, I I substituted in the high schools for off and on for five or six years, right out of college and. Few years ago before I started working at the uh steel mills and the importance of those type of role models in school. And uh grade schools, uh middle schools especially, uh can't be understated. So I mean, we've got a lot of quality individuals uh that probably could donate a little time to uh to substitute. It's a. Little hurdle to get over to uh to do that, but uh maybe a pro- It's a little hurdle to get over to, uh, to do that, but, uh, maybe a program to, uh, look at some of the individuals that we have currently here, uh, that exist to, to do that, because the importance of role models, uh, good, good role models, uh, can't be understated, and, uh, yeah, focus on that, and I thank you.
Absolutely, if I may just address that really quickly, the commission did talk about how, um, there is many African American males who are quick to join the police force. So, on the criminal justice side of things, whether it be the police force or going to work in a juvenile detention center, we see a lot of African American male present within the criminal justice side of things, but it's not the same numbers when it comes to education. So, one of the things that we're looking at is, um, the pay for, um, officers when it, and in comparison to the pay for educators. And so, that is a barrier when you are getting paid to be on the criminal justice side, because a lot of those who are already in the criminal justice field are going there specifically for the money. You know what I mean? So, when you're looking at education, if there, there's a lower pay, and I know this is a problem that's kind of everywhere, but when there's a lower pay, um, they're not quick to go to that area, because we are, are kind of struggling, as we know, fifty-three percent of Michigan City is struggling to meet their basic needs. So, um, yeah, if there's something that the city council can recommend, maybe even to the state, um, that would do us great, uh, a great service here for African American males.
Thank you, Miss Troutman, for that. Uh, are there any other council comments, any other questions for Miss Troutman? Um, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, being a past, uh, council liaison on the social status of African American males. And I brought it up before, having worked, having worked in, uh, the school for four years now, since I retired, I would like to see you continue trying to push and recruit more black mentors in the schools. There's a great need for it. Uh, I, I work with them every day, Monday through Thursdays, and we need, we need more black, uh, mentors.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Um, excuse me, can you, yes, can you, uh, hang on to a public comment and address that? I'm glad to give you time to speak on that, it's just, uh, we have to finish this in order, please. But I definitely would like to hear your comment. Thank you.
Is that it?
Any other council comment?
Uh, well, I just want to say thank you, Miss Troutman. I also served on the commission for several years, and I remember working with, uh, Mister Payne and going, taking the kids down to, uh, the State House and, and, uh, just working with the state, uh, Social Status Commission, and I, I know that you guys do a lot of gr- a lot of great for the city, and, uh, keep up the good work. Hopefully, we can address some of the issues that you do have, that you have pointed out, and if you have any further recommendations, you know, per your mission statement to, uh, bring to the council other than your annual report, uh, report, uh, talk to your liaison, uh, come to us again, if, if there's something we can do, we're more than willing to, to help out, to improve the condition in our city with, uh, young black males, and I'd just like to state the obvious that, you know, we're trying to be role models up here, we got four African American males right now, so we're, we're, we're trying, so.
Thank you so much for that, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your mentorism, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Mister Hoss from Economic Development Executive Director. You please state your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Uh, Clarence Hoss, E D C M C Director, two, Kaden Spark Plaza, Michigan City. Good evening, Council, President and Council, glad to be here. I'm here to give us, give you our annual report, uh, two thousand nineteen. Um, just want to start, let's say we've had some great years, and two thousand nineteen was not, um, was also, was also a great year. Um, the E D C, our mission statement is to develop, implement seamless policies, procedures, and programs for economic and community development that drives systematic and long-term viability through collaboration, and consists with our stakeholders and re- community resources. Our plan, objectives to really to, um, try and, uh, look at economic inclusion, workforce development, town attraction, place making, storytelling. And we developed this last year with a consultant that came to town and had a community meetings, a survey. And so, goals for the next five years is to work on those, uh, objectives. They're much more detailed than that, so I think I've given each of you in the past a copy of our, um, plan, so please feel free to reread that and, um, ask me any questions on, on that plan, but that's the plan we're currently working through for the next three to five years. Um, one of our benchmark programs is the, uh, business retention expansion program. We try to go out and meet at least fifty businesses a year and see what's going on in our backyard. And I always tell people, the same way we are out there trying to recruit business, the same way people are trying to recruit our business. And so, they get offers like, like everybody else, and so, we always try and make sure we know what's going on. Um, we, we do probably ninety percent of the time, there's sometimes things happen, we, we don't know, it's just the two business transactions that, you know, we're not part of. But we try and, uh, make sure we know what's going on and try to hear some of the issues they may be having. Um, some of the things we discussed, uh, last year was expansion. Um, this is, uh, looking to either expand their footprint, or also, um, buying equipment. And also workforce, uh, that's a big issue right now, uh, and also those following up and, um, other issues they may have, sometimes it has be, has to do with planning or zoning, or just, um, some issues they may be having with purchases or, uh, roads or whatever, so that, those are the kind of thing we, we discuss when we, we go and visit the, the local business community. One of the things we do is, of course, try to attract new business to, uh, Michigan City, and, uh, we've been trying to track the, then the, the requests for what we get in to our office. We're gonna average of a tour a week, and, uh, this time I include in your packet what those can look like. There's a project spectrum and a project, uh, what's it called? But kind of some of the, the, the questions we get asked from, um, either site selectors or companies that, uh, we get those emails from, you know, directly from site selectors, from a company or from the state. And so, um, those two, as you can tell, we probably could not respond to, they went over, uh, uh, buildings forty to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, uh, third tower ceiling, um, they, um, want to make sure they weren't close to neighbors because they made noise and they had smell, so there's certain things they ask for, we can't, you know, we, we can't move forward with. Um, one had to be on the railroad, um, they wanted to be able to, um, have forty thousand square feet of building with room to grow, eight hundred thousand square feet. Again, you know, you need to have at least forty acres, fifty acres ready, um, for that to happen, so, but everyone we get, we gotta go through, uh, loo- look at the specs and then respond. And there's some we hit that, that needs, you know, ten thousand square feet, five employees, those are easy ones. Um, but, um, a lot of the ones we've been getting, if you look at the, the years, the last two years, the buildings are pretty large, over a hundred thousand square feet, and then on the bottom, over two hundred thousand square feet, so we're getting quite a few of those lately, and they want the building yesterday, unfortunately. Yeah, uh, we don't have those empty buildings, you know, around Michigan City, that has the, uh, the, the ceiling height. The oldest building we got right now is a Phil Morgan Building, that's an eighteen foot clear, that's so, that's not before one of the current manufacturers. Um, but, um, we are billing, um, well, we have a company billing and do billing right now, uh, uh, via G I F, uh, two hundred and, uh, o- over two hundred thousand square feet, uh, thirty foot ceiling height. And they'll be leaving the building they're currently, um, uh, located in of, of, um, um, Highway twenty and, uh, towards the prison, I know, nice towards the prison, yes, yes, and so, um, that building will probably be empty at the end of the year. And so, we'll have a nice building to lease or sell, also for two hundred thousand square feet. Some of our highlights from last year, we worked with ten companies to either relocate or, um, have them expand locally, um, new jobs, a hundred and sixty-five new jobs. Retain jobs, those are jobs that could have gone somewhere else with companies we work with closely, um, and then over seventy-eight million invested. Some of those companies came through the council for tax abatement. Um, last year, we had a number of large investors, uh, in equipment and buildings, but not necessarily a lot of jobs, and that's been the trend. More companies are doing more capital investment, but less jobs, because the jobs today, uh, you do two, two or three things, so that is driving up the pay scale, of course, too. Uh, so, um, one company came in, they were offering eighteen bucks an, an hour on scale. Um, the caveat is, once they hire you, they ship you to North Carolina for six weeks, train you, and bring you back home, so that, that's not a bad deal, but, um, they were hiring people, um, on scale, which is awesome, because a lot of times you gotta have certain skill before they hire you, and that was Marback. And so, they were looking to hire thirty over five years, they've hired twenty in one year, so they did, they did something right in Michigan City. Um, square footage, we either added or had, had put up on the market over, uh, almost two hundred thousand square feet. And those are some of the, um, the locals, the companies we worked with last year, as I said, Marback was a German company on the, on the, on the bottom right, Solair announced their expansion through last year, uh, P H M Brand, that's the, uh, company that does hemp processing. Spent over five mil- five million dollars on their first project, and, um, looking to hire about fifty people. Um, Tempesta, uh, was an unusual company, they're a social media marketing company, and they wanted to be here because of our fiber trunks, uh, within Michigan City, and they were looking for people who had English degrees and journalism degrees, which is an unusual request, but people who can write, so, um. Some of the things we did last year, that's we're hoping to break ground this year, already have folks their apartments, a cou- couple of single family homes. Um, they're producing zone, a lot, lots of interest there, we had, uh, site visits for, from site selectors to look at sites in the city. Um, we have two meetings per year with brokers, uh, we have one this Friday, with thirty-five brokers from across the region, Michigan, um, South Bend, uh, Mar- Marville, they come, they come to town, and we talk about projects and how we can help them get our name out, uh, with them. And they're some of our best marketing team, actually the brokers, industrial brokers, we give, they're trying to make a deal. So, we try to educate them what's happening in the marketplace, uh, what can I really say, we have vacant buildings, and they help market the city. And we had three articles last year, too, you know, in our foreign direct, um, invest magazines to talk about why a foreign company should invest in Michigan City. Uh, other things was, of course, the job fair, we had over, uh, almost sixty employers, uh, or almost two fifty, uh, employment seekers, uh, including the high school students, they were, they were, um, let go a little early so they can come to the job fair. Sponsored by the C C D in Michigan City, uh, uh, Work One, Chamber of Commerce, none of ourselves. We also created a partnership with Purdue Manufacturing Excellence Partnership, uh, we had over a hundred and sixty-five employers, employees, uh, from twenty-five local companies, and they're talking about measurements and getting stuff, uh, uh, CNC machinery and so, they, uh, really manufacturing type courses, uh, now offered at A K Smith, uh, once a month through, uh, Purdue. Uh, the, uh, Small Business Center, um, user officer do counseling for anybody who's looking to start a business in Michigan City. And so, they were able to, uh, counsel thirty-one folks last year from the city who were trying to start a business here, and that gave you the backing of the clientele that they were looking at. Um, and five started a business, uh, last year, so, you know, we try to make sure that, as part of the whole economic development, that we're not only trying to create jobs, we want to make sure people who want to create their own jobs, because we think that's the best way to. Um, a lot of companies and businesses started because people here started a company, uh, the Solaires of the world, the, the Deckers of the world, the Vaniers. Um, so, those are all local growing companies that over years became, you know, multi mil- million dollar companies, so we want to see more of that happening in Michigan City. Um, so, for other, uh, initiatives with workforce and development, uh, we are, you know, part of a team that got a grant last year, and the grant is on its final leg, uh, should be finishing up by end of this summer. Um, with that grant, uh, we've, I'm able to have, uh, evening classes with Ivy Tech and A K Smith. So, if you're looking to learn how to well, uh, become a production technician, or L P, C N A, um, the classes could be free depending on your income, so we've been trying to get people to go into those classes, because try and make sure people can also raise their income, uh, you could have a job or you don't have a job, but the whole idea is, if you don't have enough skill, want to make sure you get skill, uh, have a skill to have a better paying job, so. And that's being offered right up between A K Smith and Ivy Tech, and that's in the evenings. Uh, we also work with them to do the, uh, uh, Careers Expo, where we go and help them do mock interviews. We get corporations to go out, H R to go out to help these kids have, have mock interviews, because want to make sure when they hit after high school or after A K Smith, when they go for a job interview, they know what they're doing and they can get a job. Um, of course, the Promise Scholarship, we see as a great, um, economic development tool. We've seen, um, the housing prices, um, our sales increase in Michigan City, and we try to track the non-beach area, because the beach area is always, there's always sales going on, so we, we look at the areas below Highway twelve, and we see a lot of activity in the marketplace, but also more enrollment in the schools. So, for our partnerships, uh, M C A S has been a great partner for us, uh, we have been able to launch the, uh, Compress Air Academy. Uh, we had five of the local companies that, uh, uh, actually, when they had machinery, uh, staff time, uh, curriculum, and they want to make sure this program continues. Uh, we're now working with Ivy Tech, so you can go to high school, get four or five certifications, and then if you take dual credits, you can leave high school with an A S degree in, uh, I guess, engineering technology. And so, the goal is for you to be able to go into all these companies, you know, making probably forty, forty-five, fifty grand a year right away, with no, with no, with no debt. So, that, that, that's the best way to do that, so, and we're trying to make sure that this program continues. We had a guinea pig, uh, program last year, we had five kids, uh, this past year, we've got forty-five, so I think the kids are really responding very, very well to this program. Uh, we also do every two years, it's called Maiden, Maiden Laporte County, and you guys are always welcome to come to this, we've got fifty companies. Um, we're trying to find a big warehouse in, in, in Michigan City, in Laporte, and, uh, we have fifty companies come out and show their wheres, what they make, and we have all five school districts come through, and last year, we had over two thousand kids, uh, middle schoolers come out and look at what is made in Laporte County, and, because a lot of people drive through and see these huge buildings, you don't know what's behind those walls. And so, we want to make sure the kids understand, you can have a career right here at home in Laporte County. Uh, we do field trips, the Chamber and, and the E D C helps pay for kids to go to manufacturing shows in Chicago. And we're in the fourth year of coding, uh, we see a lot of coding as a feature, uh, for people who want to be manufacturing, banking, retail, hospitality, I mean, you gotta know how to use a computer and do certain things today, that's just the way it is, so. Uh, looking forward, uh, we're putting together a housing task force and a workforce, well, task force to talk about how to improve our housing across the board, workforce, uh, football housing, and also, uh, workforce, how do we make sure people get a job? Because we keep hearing people who are unemployed, I keep watching the numbers every time, you've got three point nine, four point two, three point nine, four point two, so I start, I work, I spoke to folks over at, at Work One, and so, we estimated there's roughly one thousand foreign people in Laporte County who are unemployed. So, if you just do a rough estimate again, half of those people probably live north of ninety-four. So, we're assuming that there's seven hundred and fifty people looking for a job north of ninety-four. We're trying to find where those people are. Uh, we looked last two months for the all the job listings in Work One, and this, that's the official government number, so we have to use that, because you can find jobs on Indeed and everywhere else, but there were over two thousand jobs listed in, at the Work One site for Laporte County. So, we're trying to figure out how to make sure people are looking for jobs, figure out how to get those jobs, or if it's a skill issue, it's a computer issue. So, that's a big question, we're trying to figure out how to connect those people, because there's a gap in there somewhere. Um, because we keep seeing, the number never goes down below probably three point nine. It's always hovering at three point nine, where in the rest of the state it's three, three percent. So, the question is, you know, where are these people who are looking for a job? Now, just keep in the back of your head, the state does not spend any money on doing field work. Somebody says an indie, and those are computer analysis, and that's what they come with those numbers, so we're a little here too of how the numbers are, are put together, because there's nobody coming and doing field work to figure out where these people are. So, locally, we're trying to figure that, that question out, so I'm, I'm open for any help on that one. Because I'm stumped right now, it's been probably six months we've been trying to look, figure out, figure it out, and we, we still can't find a good answer. I don't know, so, um, so we have a meeting, um, this Friday with the, uh, with, with the brokers. Uh, we also kick off our, uh, Michigan City Neighborhood Leadership Academy, uh, this Thursday night, and we've got twenty-two, um, citizens, residents signed up for it, and we're excited about this program to get people to figure out how to improve their neighborhoods, to create a neighborhood association. And, uh, so, we, we've got one from each ward, there's one ward that has one, I won't mention that ward, but we're trying to get more people in, in, uh, until Thursday, so if you know anybody who still want to get in, there's still, you know, two, three more days before they get in, so. Uh, but we think it's gonna be a great program to get people to come out and, and figure out how to work within the community and make things happen. And so, you are invited to gra- to the graduation, which is gonna be April, twenty-third, so we'll make sure you get an official invite to, to the graduation at the, uh, Saint Joe, um, uh, Community Center, and there'll be food too, so please come out. Um, uh, Select Chicago is a group that we would join, uh, over a year ago. Um, this is a, a regional group that tries to attract foreign investment, so we're having a tour, uh, March twelfth. We have six countries, so six trade representatives coming to Michigan City to look at how they can either, either invest in Michigan City or buy products from company in Michigan City. Uh, the goal is to have them, you know, get a tour and meet some of our business, and hopefully, we'll have some trade with some foreign company, uh, foreign countries and companies. Uh, our investor kickoff, of course, uh, we try to raise funds every. Uh our investor kickoff, of course, uh we try to raise funds every three years. So every three years, we could go and knock on business doors. Um our award is May fourteenth. Again, the council will be getting an invite to that. We, every two years, we tell companies, thank you for investing in our community. So we give them an award for investments they've made. That's a nice way of saying thank you and we want you to stay in Michigan City. And so that'll be May fourteenth. And so, but then of course, our big job fair, um April sixteenth, uh at Blue Chip from one to six P M. Just wanna give you a quick overview of a survey that was done by a hundred and fifty site selectors. Site selectors are people who are paid by companies to find space for their companies. And so we had a survey that was done last year and it was given to us by, by this magazine called Site Selection Magazine. And some of the top things that companies are looking for as they look across the country. I mean, we are one of probably over thirty thousand cities looking for the same thing. So this, this is what they look for when they start looking for uh a site, uh workforce skills is probably is number one. That's no, that's, we, we know for the past three or four years. Of course, transportation, state and local taxes permitting, uh of course, development, make, make sure you have a pipeline of people being developed. Where they find the information, they go to your website, they look at newspaper articles. So they do read the paper and they do watch, watch, watch the articles. Um what are some of the most common deal killers? Uh lack of responsiveness, uh poor leadership, lack of buildings, of course, which we have here. Lack of skills, of course, breaching confidence. And then what are the most active sectors right now? Last, the last two years, of course, distribution, advanced manufacturing, food processing, biomed data, so. So I caught a quick snapshot of what's going on there in the industry. I can afford to see if you guys wanna have that, because it's, there's like ten slides, I'm gonna give you two, so. Um well, I'm open for questions. Uh you should have in your packet our annual report. I didn't wanna kinda um that has some more, much more detail um of what I presented tonight, but we're always excited to work with you guys. And um you guys are also invited to our um investor kickoff uh on, on, on March nineteenth. Should I get the invite? So clear response, I have a head count, so. Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the very informative report, Mr. Hulse, and appreciate, appreciate it. Uh one question I do have, and we talked about this a couple of months back, that was with the uh little bit off subject to what your report's about, that's for the appointment to the council. Uh and if you have taken that back to your board and looking at how that process. If you're gonna notify the council next October, remember we talked about this when appointments, and I'm not picking on any appointment or bringing anything to light, but it's just that when this uh appointment's made, the council's never notified about it. Uh take for example this year, Councilwoman Deutsch, you know, she was apparently your organization approached her. States, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry. But anyway, uh you know the whole explanation. How you're gonna contact the council uh next year in October to say uh our appointment's coming up, is there anybody from the council that would like to apply for that position? I mean, send a letter to the president of the city council, that way he can inform all the city council members. If anybody isn't uh interested in it, then they know that that's the time that they should apply or let the organization know that. And I know that that hasn't gone on in the past.
No, that we'll make sure the council president is aware of it so he can tell the council.
Okay, could you, could you do me a favor? Uh send me a letter when that's taken care of? Are you gonna vote it into your bylaws or?
That's above my pay raise, so I'm gonna let, let my executive committee know that and they will.
Board of Directors and you can discuss it.
Oh yeah, I'll talk to the layers on too, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh Councilman Mack. Very good presentation, Mr. Hulse. Hulse, thank you. Um I'm also on the Sustainability Committee. And uh not so long ago, I had a woman by the name of Dominique Edwards, and she gave an outstanding presentation about food deserts and health and things of that nature. And uh how, you know, access to quality food alleviate, alleviates travel for people to have to do that. We've got food deserts here in Michigan City. Uh it creates healthier communities. People aren't living and eating their primary meals from gas stations, high carb, all that other stuff that goes with it. So in investigating some uh other redevelopment committee committees in places like especially Chicago, I saw that they partnered and did public-private partnerships with grocers. Uh there was one with Trader Joe's I saw in Chicago and different other places. And I just was wondering, is there something in Indiana that prohibits that? Or in your experience, have you seen uh cities that partner with grocery? Because groceries are, are not a high margin thing. It's low margin. So there's not gonna be a huge profitability in having a grocery store in a small section of our town, like we really, that would help us. But it would alleviate a lot of problems and I just would like to know if you've heard of that or is that something in Indiana or that you've seen in your experience?
There's not a lot of precu- precursors from trying to pursue any of those options. The issue always becomes is it has to be heavily subsidized because of the margins. And so it has to be the right location. And also education, because um there was one that's opened up over in the, off Michigan Boulevard and Carroll Avenue. Unfortunately, from what I understand, the foods item weren't the best or the selection wasn't the best, so they, they, they went away. So I think that's be some education, but also community support, because you can't spend all this money to subsidize a grocery store and nobody uses it. Because they will, they will eventually go away. So there's a, you know, the community has to really support it and it's gonna be the right match, the right fit. You can't, you can't miss somebody who ain't not gonna do the right thing by the community.
It would have to be an Al's or Kroger's, uh Trader Joe's, or somebody that actually is doing that. They're subsidized, um and, and it would be a nonprofit thing for us, but our people would get the advantage of it.
And typically it's done through some kind of uh nonprofit uh to make it work. Um and yeah, you do have to find a chain. Because the independence, it's tough to be an independent today. So you gotta find a regional chain.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Paul President.
Uh good evening, Mr. Hulse. I uh have a couple of questions for you. Are your meetings uh with the E D C is uh, are those open to the public?
Uh no, they're not.
No, they're not. How much uh money does the city give your uh commission for uh the year for performing?
Uh the city gives a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
Hundred and fifty thousand. So, um I too have a problem with not notifying the council about the uh uh vacancy that comes up with the, with the board. I also have a problem that your meetings aren't uh transparent.
Well, we are, we are transparent as we can be, because by Indiana statute, we can't afford to say certain things in public. We are bound, bound by state law. And we are private, non-private, that's bound by state law.
Okay, well I, I have another question about something that you were talking about on your report, this uh Skills Up Three and uh uh you received six hundred and seventy-seven thousand in a grant. And I was wondering, where are you at in the grant and how many people have been gone through that program? And, and what have you, have you guys targeted with that money? What groups and uh how, how's that affect the county?
I can probably send you a more, more, more uh uh report on that, because we don't, we didn't get the money ever. So the money came through Work One. So they keep tabs of how the money is spent and all. So I don't have that in my person, my possession, but I can get it for you.
Oh, okay, so you're not the agency. You made it sound like it.
No, we work with them. We have to do, do support letters along with them there and all that.
Michigan City have gone through that program.
I know we got five companies in Michigan City working with, with Work One to get people retrained. I'd have to give you the numbers on that.
Well, I'd like to know. And I think the general public needs to know, because we need to know how many upscale jobs are being created here in Michigan City besides uh restaurant jobs and big jobs that are happening and why they're not coming here. Because we haven't had a ma- I don't think a major thing happened. I think the Solair thing was gonna happen uh because they, just from the work performance of the workforce in that company. So with that being said, you alluded to the fact that we didn't have the buildings. We didn't have the infrastructure, we didn't have this or that. We need to know what we need to do. We need to know. And also, one other thing, is that I have a young son who's in the workforce in Michigan City. And um he was working for a firm that is from Germany. And if anybody knows about the world economy, how they get paid in Germany and all the benefits they have. This guy was making thirteen dollars an hour running a CNC machine at a company in Michigan City. Not receiving a pay raise when he was supposed to receive it. So he found other employment. Of course, that's the American way to try to better yourself. But see, I think that we need, as the community of elected officials really need to get in in the nuts and bolts of what's actually happened on this economic development. And also, can you explain to me why Laporte County still has the highest unemployment rate? When we're going in the state, one of the highest, maybe one of the top five, why this is still going on for the last, I, I can't, for that ma- that many years it, it's been reporting. We've been always at the top. What in the heck are we doing wrong? No, I'm asking you, because you're the economic developer.
Oh, I, I think I explained to you a little earlier. We, we've been trying to figure out where are these, where are these people who are looking for a job? So that's why I think we're trying to figure out exactly, and then if they're looking for a job, what are their skill sets? So we are looking into it.
Okay, let me ask you this. Does the homeless population add into the unemployment figures in our county?
No, under the people who are actively looking for a job, they're counted.
And how do they get accounted for being active?
Because uh people who are um either on benefits, unemployment benefits or looking at any kind of federal or state benefits have to look for a job. And so then they have to apply for a job. If you're not actively looking, you're not counted.
Okay, let me ask you this now. Have you had any uh dealings or any outreach from the Keys of Hope to get people employed there? In, in.
They work with the E D C. Yeah, we work with Keys of Hope in the past. We don't walk in hand to get employment. That's where they have a state agency that does that. So we have, we connect them together with the state agency. They have people who will help you do a resume, do job interviews, and make sure you get ready for a job. And that's a whole separate job through, through Work One, which there's office on eight, eighth, eighth uh Eighth Street or Eighth Avenue, so.
I guess that what I'm getting at is that there's a lot, there's, that is a pretty good segment in our community. And that that's their mission, from my understanding, is to get these people employment. So I would imagine that somehow you would be involved with it some way, in some form or fashion. So something's being missed here. So I think that's why I'm asking the question. We need to be looking at why.
Well, I mean, there was, there's a state agency that actually has all the jobs and the training. So Keys of Hope work with those guys, because they have all the job listings. So companies, when they come to town or do the hiring, they give the Work One all the job listings. And so that's how they're connected.
Okay, well, I guess then in saying that, have we had any uh uh people come into this uh Skills Up program from Keys of Hope? Or the AK Smith Center from Keys of Hope?
Most of the people, most of the people who are coming through the Skills Up program are people who are unemployed or currently working. So a student would not be coming through the Skills Up program because they're already skilled.
Okay, so you're telling me to go to Work One?
That's where the people go. It's a state, state funded program.
Here's what, here's the thing I'm getting at. We have a problem with employment and finding out what we need to do for that segment. And I think that it behooves us to find out what we're doing wrong and start doing something right. Because uh what I see, there's been a lot of bad things going on in Michigan City for the last fifty years. And one of them is not attributed to you. It's planning. And planning where it comes to infrastructure or job creation. So we need to find out what we're doing wrong and we need to straighten it out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, uh Councilwoman H.
Um thank you for the presentation. As far as um the welding programs and all of the programs we talk about with Skill Up. I know um, you know, I share that information quite a bit and they have been struggling. I know they had a full daytime class but struggling to get people in those classes. And one thing I will say that um there's money out there for people to go get the training, to get the certification in welding. Uh we just need to get, get them there. But one of the, the key factors that prohibits a lot of our residents is transportation. And um I think that's something that we need to investigate a little bit more. And how do we get people to some of these programs? Um because that's it, our bus system ends at a certain time every day. So um I know that's one of the factors. I know that there's a Workforce Development Committee that has started forming that um hopefully we'll be able to address some of those things. Um I know that's one of the, the biggest things, is getting people to the program. It's not necessarily that there's nothing out there.
Or to and from work.
Yeah, we need, we need transportation for people to get to work and get home. So hopefully that's something that um as we move forward in the year that we investigate, you know, further. But thank you again for coming and, and presenting the information.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? So yeah, I, also I'd like to thank you for coming out. Uh I did have a couple of questions. Um so one is uh is there help for local businesses through uh what you guys do to help them either uh get started or to further their businesses or either develop uh smaller companies?
We help businesses working with Small Business Center. They are federally funded program. And they will walk it through from A to Z and getting a business plan. Because whether you're using your own money or you borrow money from the banks or anybody else, you need to have a business plan. So that's a free program. It's free as a tax that was paid for, but they use our offices to um to do counseling. And so we've had, like I said, thirty-one people last year who went through that program to start, five started a business. Um we do have a loan program. We also refer people out to a group called the R D C out of Alvarez who do what they call five or four loans, hundred percent financing. And also we work with other local banks to help people get financing.
So and uh how long have, has the uh E D C been in partnership with the city doing what you do?
Uh over twenty-two or twenty-three years.
Okay. Now, has the process of how you guys select your board members or communicate with the council, has that changed? Or has anyone from the council approached you about clarifying any of that?
To the best of my knowledge, it's always been uh the board picks the, the council member and they've stayed on there for years uh when they did that, so.
You've always had someone from the council on the board?
We'll look at the records from the last ten years. Uh some years they didn't have, I think the, the board decided they need to have a council member on, on the board.
Okay, now, now this is just uh from my personal information, I guess. Now, I want, I wanna say I recall something from a newspaper about you being recognized for something. I know, did you put that in?
Yeah, which one? I had Australian Star Award from the city of Indiana.
Can you kinda elaborate on that? Because I don't think, you know, a lot of people realize, I, I didn't expect you to know this, but I think that's noteworthy.
Yeah, they stay over there and give you an award for being, I guess, a, a great economic developer across the state. So I was awarded, awarded for that.
Okay, congratulations on that. Thanks again for coming out. We appreciate you. Thank you. So uh any, any comments for the public?
Alina Yersida, one twenty-five East Harrison Street. I just had a question about page twelve on the booklet that was passed out. It says investors making all the difference. Um how do you get your name on this booklet, first of all? And then um I noticed one of the members, Seven Okays is no longer in business and hasn't been since two thousand seventeen. And it was bought out by, I believe, Sterno. So I was just questioning on um how the investors were printed on her, on here.
I don't know, uh okay, you have essentially correct.
These are, they're investors who uh pay to be part of our uh the E D C. Uh our budget is roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so the city gave us a hundred and fifty. We raised the rest of the money from the private sector. So these are all people who have paid in. We do a three-year campaign. So if you put your, your name on there three years ago, it's still on there.
Okay, and uh Mr. Hulse, if anyone else has any questions, if you might stick around for a little bit after the meeting, so we don't do the whole back and forth thing all night. Um any other uh public comments? Any other public comments?
Good evening, Council.
Can you please state your, uh, name and address?
Ray Kelly, senior, three thirty, North Calumman Avenue, Michigan City. Uh, uh.
Uh, Michael Anthony Jones, one oh eight First Street, Michigan City.
I, uh, I wanted to, uh, address the council last week. We got a little off. But I wanted to speak to the council, especially, uh, last month being, uh, Black History Month. Uh, of one of our great, uh, 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 former residents, Mayor Richard Hatch of Gary. Uh, Mr. Hatch did a lot, uh, in, in, in Gary. And he came from Michigan City. And if I could, I'd just like to go over, uh, some of his accomplishments here, uh, right quick. Uh, Richard Gordon Hatch was born, uh, July seventh, nineteen thirty-three at Michigan City, Indiana. Hatch graduated from Elston High School in nineteen fifty-two. He graduated from Indiana University and then he went on. In nineteen fifty-nine, he graduated from Valpo Law School. He also worked as a deputy prosecutor in Lake County, Indiana, and also in private practice. He was elected to the Gary City Council in nineteen sixty-three, and he was elected mayor of Gary in nineteen sixty-seven, becoming one of two of the first black mayors of major cities in the United States. Hatch also obtained national prominence serving two presidents as civil rights advisors. Uh, those presidents were LBJ and Jimmy Carter. He was a frontliner on many issues of civil rights and equal justice and economic justice. Uh, Hatch, uh, served, uh, openly against oppression. Mr. Hatch is a stalwart and he's from Michigan City, Indiana. And I would like to see a proclamation for Mr. Hatch. Uh, for, for his, his deeds to, to not just, uh, Indiana and Lake County, but the country, the United States. Because being from Michigan City and being a civil rights advisor to two presidents, that's, uh, very good accolades. And he's a hometown boy. And I would like to see him honored, uh, or in, in some kind of way, like the mayor here, some kind of proclamation, uh, to honor Mayor Richard Hatch, Richard Gordon Hatch. And me and my friend here, Mike Jones, we did some research. And Mr. Jones, you can have, he's from Gary, Indiana.
Just a little bit, um, Hatchet, uh, he did civil rights sit-ins in Michigan City, uh, you know, local establishments that wouldn't serve African Americans that as college sit-ins, you know? And, um, many other issues, sit-ins and stuff he did, you know, is how to get civil rights moving, you know?
So this is why I, I didn't get a chance to speak last, the last council meeting. But this is what I wanted to say to the city council and to the city of Michigan City and to our mayor, uh, tonight. Uh, I would love to see him to be honored in proclamation or resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Any other council, uh, public comment? Please state your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Jacoby Spencer, two forty, two forty Pleasant Ave, Michigan City.
Can you pull the microphone too? Sorry.
Jacoby Spencer, two forty Pleasant Ave, Michigan City. Um, we came here today because my daughter was, um, at Crawford's on the twenty-ninth of February. And she was helping her cousin get into a vehicle where Officer Corley approached her. And, um, he, he followed her from one end of the building to the next end. And we've been having a problem with Officer Corley for a long time, from him coming into my home, throwing a shoe, hitting my son in the head. And another officer, which I couldn't see who he was because he was covered up, asked Officer Corley to come to his office that he shouldn't have done that. Corley stated right there in front of Swiss Stat that you ain't my boss. I'm not going to, to nobody's office. You know, another incident where, um, a young guy that's friends with my, my sons was walking to my house and a family member of, um, Officer Corley. And his friends seen him and they jumped him. So when he seen the guy and he fought the guy again, he fought the guy, um, the police came to the gas station. They left it at that. It was a fight. So between three to five months later, Corley came to investigate because it was his family member and arrested him. Then after that, about nine to ten other guys, including Corley's family member, came and they all jumped the young man again. You know, he, he's always harassing us. He, he harasses my kids until now. He done messed up my daughter's arm. And nothing is being done to Corley. This is not the first incident, the second incident, third or fourth or fifth incident. We've been having problems with Corley for a long time, with Officer Corley. The, uh, the old chief of police knew about this. He witnessed it and nothing is being done. So, I mean, but she can tell you more about what happened at Crawford because I wasn't there.
Um, Anika Cooper, two fourteen York Street. Um, I was at Crawford's and I was helping my cousin into a car. And Officer Corley had walked up to me and he was telling us that we had to go. I'm like, okay, um, I'm just trying to help my cousin in the car. And then that's when he just came out of nowhere. He's like, okay, well, you keep on, you're going to go to jail for disorder conduct. So I ain't say nothing, but I just, me and my dad walked off. So he followed him and another officer had, um, followed us. And they had got ahead of us and me and my dad having, having a conversation. He probably two to three hundred feet in front of us. So I'm having a conversation with my dad. He turned around and walked up to me. He's like, then I tell you want to go to jail for disorder conduct? I'm like, what I do? I'm like, I didn't do nothing to you. So he get the, grabbed my arm, get the roughing me up and stuff. And my dad was like, you don't have to do that to her. Then he told my dad to shut up. And he was like, I'm going to lock all you Coopers up today. And so I had told him that I was pregnant and he said that he ain't caring, you know? And it's not Corley's first time doing this to me. This is his second time doing it to me. And I, I don't know. I don't know what's his problem with me. I don't know what's going on, but then I, in the mix of that, um, I had my sister key and I had dropped and I told Corley like, can you stop talking to my sister key? And he was like, no. He was like, F your sister key. And, um, I kept on asking him like, what, what is, why is I'm getting charged with disorder conduct? He's like, because I was being loud. I said, because I'm being loud. I was like, I'm at a bar with everybody else being loud. You, anybody harassing them? You know, and I don't know. And he put me in a handcuffs. He put me, and then as I was getting in the car, he grabbed me by my head and pushed me to, and pushed me inside the car, like, for no reason. And then he told me he was going to arrest, um, he going to add more charges, told I resisting. I'm like, how is I resisting? I'm not resisting. I'm trying to, then I even tried to talk to the man. I tried to talk to him. He just kept on telling me, shut up, shut up, shut up. And that make me feel real intimidated, like, because basically, like, he assaulted me for no reason. Like, now he injured me. I could be wa, walking outside with my children. You never know. He can pull up on me, do anything.
But she wasn't arrested. He cuffed her and let her go.
Wow. Okay, thanks. Um, I think this would be a more appropriate, um, to be addressed with the, with the police commission. Um, right now, this is part of the public record and, uh, it's noted that you came here and spoke. So, uh, afterwards, if there, if there's more information that we can provide you with, uh, probably here. Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. I think this is the appropriate place. There's no better place than our city council. Uh, yesterday at the Board of Works meeting, I talked about this issue with our mayor, who went door to door in our black community, in their community, saying how he was going to change the makeup and the atmosphere of the police department in our community. We constantly have unsolved murders in our community because we looked down on, um, I was on a couple of campaigns to get people elected into office, including Duane Perry. And we spoke about this citizen review board, independent citizen review board. Uh, Mr. President, you talking about it? I heard Angie talking about it, Michael talking about it, Trace. I heard all, everybody talk about it. Sounds good. But now, when I bring it up, I just got the first thing from the mayor was, haven't even been in office for a good six, uh, good sixty days yet. We've been waiting for justice for sixty years. The time is now. The time, we do not have no more time to wait. Too many people talk down about us, talk down to us, even members on the same, that's on this council right now today. We have too many issues in this community and the systemic racism issue that we have in this, this community has to stop. I'm running for city council at large in a caucus. We have a member, somebody at joint trying to run, and they made the following comment. I'm running because there's too many blacks on the city council. We just left out of Black History Month. We all know what happened fifty-five years ago in Selma. A lot of people take this stuff for a joke. A lot of our people died and suffered, and we still suffer. We're still fighting adversity in twenty twenty. Mr. Mayor, I'm holding you to what you said to us, because you knocked on our doors. And a lot of y'all knocked on our doors. It's time to put the workshop together and it's time to get this independent citizen review board together, because we got to be able to hold these police officers accountable. Just because we changed the police chief and put a black one in place, doesn't mean the problem stopped or the problem is solved. You are who you are. We see who you are. We know who you are. It's time to put an end to this, Mr. President. Do the right thing and let's get him to buy his closed doors and let's get a citizen, um, independent review board done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any further public comment?
Margaret Pizza, ten oh nine Tennessee Street, Michigan City. Um, I know there was a workshop last week, Thursday. I was unable to make it. I do appreciate you listening to me as far as when there's a workshop. There's a workshop to have the people in the audience who have questions, comments, to come to a microphone. I appreciate that, watching it on TV. Okay. Um, I still have questions after, uh, viewing the, the tape or the workshop. Um, one question that came to my mind is had, if we had decided to have, let's say, the double tracking on the South Side, which is by Ames Field, would, uh, the tracks on eleventh, Tenth Street still be there? After, you know, after the double tracking, would, you know, would that, would the tracks still be on Tenth and Eleventh Street? Other questions, um, well, this question was brought up. How fast does the train travel now from Sheridan, well, my question would have been Sheridan to Michigan Boulevard? And how fast would it be going from Sheridan to Michigan Boulevard with the double tracking? Um, other, other questions, a, a question I have, the street closures. Whose decision or whose, um, um, proposal was it? Was it on the city's side? Was it on the Nicky's side? Whose was it? And why were the residents not, you know, at meetings to voice their opinion? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Stransky, two two three Espargaville. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for putting another step into the money situation in Michigan City. I think it's one of the best things that I have seen this council do this year so far. Make one more step. That's a great thing. The second thing that I wanted to, um, mention was, let's just let it go at that. I've lost it. Thank you. Huh? No, your tie's always great. Your don's too, always.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, that is Gloria Pry, Michigan City. I've been here for seven, seven, eight years and, uh, so, I mean, you show me, so, so, but what I want to know, that's my grand, great granddaughter there. And I'm not, I don't know, I wasn't there, but I just want to understand how she can get around messed up. No police was reported, uh, no police report. Now, in order for you to do some damage like that to a person, anybody, they should have been doing something, right? That would warn you grabbing them and throwing them in cars. And yes, it's no charge. I don't want to stand there. And I've been here many years. I've been in, uh, many cheaper. I don't want, when she told me, I said, where's police report? It's no police report. Now, how is that? What could they have been doing so much that she injured like that and she's pregnant? And there's no more police report. I need some answers, if you, some, from somebody.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
One twenty-five East Harrison Street, Alina Yersida. I forgot to ask. I live, uh, on Harrison, right in front of the tracks. And oftentimes I see that, um, they're hauling coal, which isn't covered. And both my granddaughters have asthma. And I was wondering, who do I talk to or what, who do I go to when I see that products being moved, um, that could potentially be harmful to the environment?
Don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure you'd have to go to South Shore Freight for that question. Thank you.
Latian Troutman, two oh one Holiday Street. Um, I gave you that address because it's required, not because it's really mine. As a homeless resident of Michigan City, Indiana, who is not employed, I would like to address Mr. Hulse's, um, presentation today. Um, I have an education from Indiana University Northwest. My education is in communications with, uh, minor in public policy and environmental affairs. Um, I was never made aware of any social media jobs or communications jobs from this, um, group or organization that you put on the board here today. Um, and when it comes to communications jobs or marketing jobs or anything like that, um, it is very scarce. Uh, while I am not the only student at Indiana University Northwest who has a, um, or is seeking a degree or has sought a degree in communications, there are several students from La Porte County, um, from, that are African American as well as other races. And, um, there is never any, um, information sent to Indiana University Northwest in regards to communication or jobs that are locally hiring. So most of the communication students, we get the information from our teachers. And those, um, jobs are for Chicago-based jobs. And again, when you're talking about transportation, as a student, uh, again, at Indiana University Northwest, most of my funding goes towards transportation to and from school. And there are times while I would have to take a class from six to eight. Um, and by the time I would catch public transportation through Gary and then take the train back to Michigan City and then come here and be dropped off around about ten, there's absolutely nothing available for me to get a ride home. So I would spend the most of my time walking. This takes away from my studying time. Um, once you start calculating the hours of transportation, um, and then it takes away from my time to look for a job. But I guess to Mr. Hulse, I would say you should, um, start by looking into the schools to see where these students have any, um, interests or what students are within this area who are looking for jobs, you know, based on the education they are currently seeking. Because there is no tie to the communications of the students who are looking for jobs and to the jobs that are actually readily available here in La Porte County. And also, I would encourage you all to, um, be more inclusive of internships and returnships because there are very minimal, um, internships here in Michigan City that would help students then stay here. Because as I stated before and during my presentation, um, cost of living and then, um, the actual pay rate is a problem here in Michigan City, Indiana. And when you're talking about. And when you're talking about people like myself who are struggling to find housing, struggling to find a job, and I do have four kids, um, I really need some things to click and turn. And to say that you don't know, um, what, um, skill sets are readily available here in Michigan City, um, it is, that is definitely a problem. So I just would like for the Economic Development Center to definitely do a better job of communicating with the public about what jobs are readily available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Traumman. Uh, any other public comments? Any other public comment? Any council comment? Councilman, uh, President Deitch?
Thank you. Um, I would, uh, this evening, like to take the time that some comments were made in the, uh, federal, in the national press. And it's taken me a lot to address this subject. Reason being, someone said, a presidential candidate said that, uh, Fidel Castro is great. Well, I wanna, I wanna rebut that. Reason being that in the early seventies, I was on a hijacked plane and, uh, held hostage for over eighteen hours. A lot of people don't know that Fidel Castro was one of the only people in the international community that never signed a, uh, anti-terrorism hijacking, uh, provision with the international community. And, uh, I guess in one way that was, uh, good, but in another way it was bad cuz he promoted a lot of hijacking back then. And, uh, I really, uh, the reason, the reason why I'm saying this is because people need to be, really think about what the heck they're saying. And about a year ago, I was contacted by the, by the feds, by the FBI from New Mexico, they were going over the flight list to see who was still around. And, uh, it brought it all three sixty, because after all those years, I, I actually, you know, you kinda forget about things and you move on. But the individual that talked to me told me to go to the internet, and there's a whole subject matter on the internet about, there were three individuals that hijacked that plane and held us at gunpoint. Um. And this is one of the problems why the United States has not normalized relations with Cuba, cuz they will not sign an extradition treaty with us. And the state of New Mexico is still pursuing actively charges against this individual because they killed a state trooper there, and then they commandeered the plane. So I, I, I'm just telling you that, some people are making comments, you gotta think about what's going on in their mind. Fidel Castro was not a friend of the people of Cuba, he kept them in duress. Hopefully that, um, hopefully, people look at that statement, and I don't mean to offend anybody that's, uh, thinking about voting for that individual, I just think it had to be brought out because I just, I, I couldn't take it after I heard that comment, I just couldn't take it any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Traumman.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to read to the public, um, a notice that I received in my office, um, with the LaPorte County, from the LaPorte County Health Department, which reads, "On behalf of the LaPorte County Health Department, for parents team and boards of health, in collaboration with LaPorte County Commissioners, we want to assure the public there is a process locally in place for the C O V I D nineteen, the coronavirus. Any changes in our protocol will be sent down from the State Department of Health and will act upon them. We are monitoring the status of the C O V I D nineteen virus frequently throughout the day and attend weekly webinar meetings led by the State Department of Health staff. Steps everyone should take note, should take now are, one, perform hand washing hygiene, using the twenty-second rule of washing with soap and running lukewarm water, or use an alcohol-based hand rub before and after you eat. Avoid touching your eyes, nose and mouth, maintain social distance, at least three feet between yourself and someone that is sneezing or coughing, have hand sanitizer ready available for these instances. Two, contact your physicians early if you, if you are someone and your family develops a fever, a cough, difficult breathing or respiratory symptoms, and tell your provider of any recent travel or contact with travelers. Three, use cough etiquette when sneezing, such as into the elbow when tissues are not readily available, and wash hands immediately after, or use alcohol-based hand rub. Before, perform aerosol generating procedures in your home and environments with disinfecting sprays. Five, stay at home if you begin to feel unwell, even with mouth symptoms such as headaches and slight runny noses until you recover. Avoiding contact with others and visits to medical facilities will all, all allow these facilities to operate more effectively and help protect you and your others. For questions, concerns or updates, please call LaPorte County Health Department at two one nine three two five 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 six three. I chose to share this, um, this evening because I know that within the school systems, um, those that work in the public sector, and just being out and about and doing your daily routines, that we're seeing it on the news that the coronavirus is out of the country, but now it is, then there has been cases within the United States, we have neighboring states, where they have, now have coronaviruses reported. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone that may feel or think that they may have come in contact with something, that make sure you go to your local health department or to a health wellness clinic to get checked.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr.
Yeah, just real quickly, after we had our double track workshop Wednesday night, uh, a few things that came to my mind, that we as a council, we as a city administration, I think we need to get working on these agreements with this parking garage and with the no, or the quiet zones. Yeah, cuz these are things that are gonna cost us money, we only have three years to get this enacted, and we're gonna have to come up with money to do this. Where we're coming up with this money, I have no idea. But it's either we sit back down with the NICD and take a look at this, and try to come up with some kinda viable solution to it. But I think we need to be moving on this quickly and not wait on this particular thing, cuz I know that NICD is not waiting, they're moving full steam ahead, the city better jump on board, whether you like it or not, whether you like it or not, I'm pretty confident the double track's gonna be here. So we have to be prepared financially to be able to protect our interests and our assets. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any, uh, other council comments? I guess.
Uh, I was, uh, talking about the double track, but I, I got a question for, uh, Mrs. Deitch. Could you, I know that you work for NIPSCO, could you try to find out the figures on how many tonnage of steel that they're replacing all their towers with? Because I was out in the north LaPorte County, and they're replacing everything, uh, with, uh, these mast top things that they got, and I just would like to know what the gross tonnage is and where the origin of, uh, the steel is from, if you could. And, um, I, I agree with, uh, Don on the, uh, double track, uh, issue. But I think that, I'm not gonna go so far as saying the double track is here. I think that we need to look at the financial picture of the city and the financial obligation that we were put into with this agreement. And we need to get, we need as a community to say, can we really afford this because of the bonding that's taking place in the TIF districts? And how these people presume they're gonna pay for all this? I mean, it's astronomical. The parking garage, all the call, all the street preparation, everything. All the landscaping, everything, the quiet zone, we're talking, we're not, we're talking millions and not two or three millions. We're talking lots of millions. And you know what the whole problem is? Is that Michigan City's gonna be the tail of two cities. They're gonna cut this city in half, and we're gonna have two different communities. And I, I believe we got some serious problems ahead of us, and that as a group, with the city administration, the city council, and the planning department, we need to come together as a unified front to do what's absolutely the correct thing for Michigan City's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch.
Yeah, just the, um, I, I agree with, uh, uh, Councilman, both Councilmen, Friz Valenski's. As far as, um, we walked, we walked the, uh, entire route, um, in Michigan City, um, as far as the, the street closures, um, this past weekend. And, um, I, I do believe we need to get with internally, whether it's an executive session or whatever that is, so that we can talk through costs and do some forecasting on what that means for the city. Um, and as far as NIPS go, um, I will give that to someone, I'm a project manager in gas operations, I don't, I don't do anything on the electric side, but I will give that to someone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other council comments? Uh, I got out of order, so I wanna have comments from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, sometimes I think it probably works when I, better when I am last. Uh, Dwayne Perry, Mayor, Michigan City, uh, I wanna comment on, I'm going to comment on two of this, uh, input statements from the public. First, uh, Mr. Kelly, the period in which we proclaim the greatness of African-American men and women does not go from February first to February twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth in a leap year. Anytime is right for that. And Mr. Kelly's request to have a proclamation on the great Mayor Hatcher will be done. I will do a proclamation on that. Uh, secondly, on the comments of, uh, the, um, comments of Ms. Cooper on the incident she had with Officer Marty Corley the other night. Uh, I started to investigate that immediately after Mr. McCormick told me during the board of public works meeting Monday morning. I called Chief Campbell and I told him I wanted to, I told him about the episode, and he said he was unaware of it, that he was gonna pull all of Officer Corley's body camera footage. And, uh, I gave him a day and I talked to him again today, and he said they're reviewing it, and as soon as he's done, I'm gonna be able to review it. Uh, I assure that, that Ms. Cooper and everyone, family and friends that, that were a part of this, that justice will be served. I'm gonna investigate this, and if Mr. Corley, uh, uh, what, a lot of you don't realize is that even though I'm the chief executive of the city, I cannot fire a policeman, or a policeman, or a fireman. I, that, that's legally, I cannot fire them. But if Mr. Corley is, if, if I determine that my, my position, Mr. Corley is, is guilty, I will go to the police civil board and demand his termination as a police officer. You have my word on that. I'm not gonna stop, uh, the people who work for Michigan City are gonna be of integrity and honesty, and they're gonna be good people. Anybody that's not, there's no room for them here. And I'm gonna pursue this to finality, I'm gonna take care of this. You have my word on it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Uh, uh, just a couple of things, well, not too much, I wanna thank everyone for coming out, as always, uh, you could have been anywhere. And I appreciate you guys coming here to participate in, in, uh, this public information, so, uh, thank everyone and uh, appreciate you coming out. Um, and with the, the double tracking issue, cuz that's hot right now, I know today there was a, a workshop for the property, uh, the people that would be affected in, um, transition of moving some of those properties out to lay a double track. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch and I, Sunday, we did go door to door and deliver hand, uh, messages to the affected people, um, we got a chance to talk to a couple as well, so. Um, but one thing I did wanna note that the double track is coming, it's gonna be here. It, it's something that, um, was decided on in two thousand sixteen by the previous council and the previous administration. If there's a situation where things going forward needs to be addressed, those are things that we'll be dealing with. If there are things that can be revisited, we may be able to look into that. But the decisions that, um, were made and are, the ones that were bound by, were made by a previous council and a previous administration. So, um, as far as where we are with, with what we have to do going forward, we're definitely gonna be diligent in, in acquiring information and gathering all the necessary things that will protect us as a city and make sure that Michigan City doesn't end up on the losing end. And I definitely don't wanna be in, uh, a city where it has a tale of two cities, cuz I do live south of the tracks. So, uh, with that being said, I wanna say goodnight and. Meeting adjourned.
Move, adjourned.
Uh, much to enjoy by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Dot Fuzzelinski. All the favor, all right, all right. Goodnight, everyone.